Dear Lord, we come before you today with a thankful heart for our opportunity to live and serve you in this community, Lord. We ask you for the blessing on the task and decision that we make this evening, and please help us to use our, the best judgment for every best for our community and fellow citizen. We ask you, Jesus, to watch over us, and with all these favors, with Jesus' name we pray.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good to see everybody out today. Beautiful day out there today, and we'll get started in this meeting. I think the first person up is Mr. Chuck Chipwood with CDG to talk a little bit about the bridge project, Shavee's Bridge.
Yes, I'm here to talk about Shavee Bridge. Thank you for letting me be here today. Just an update on where we are. We're behind schedule, I guess you're aware of that. We've been behind since Matthew Burgess has left us, and we're just trying to get people in place to get back on, not only your project, but several projects, but yours is one of the priority projects we have. We got our team in place last week, had several good meetings, design meetings. We have actually submitted plans to Aldott, and they have commented on us, on those plans. They're back in our hands, we're working on resolving the comments that Aldott has made on that. We are looking at a couple of issues. One is the corner there at Everett Street and Shavee's right, I think it's EID, her property, you know, there's some pretty good encroachments on her property with the right way we're trying to acquire. We're looking at ways we can reduce that and lessen the impact to her property. So that's one of our priorities.
Is that real close to the road?
I'm not sure what color it is.
I think we decided we're not going to take all the corner.
Right.
Just tie in as possible.
Just tie in. But we're trying to really lessen the impact to her property and take as little as we actively have to. We're not going to change the road elevation in that area, we're going to have to widen it because the shoulders have to be widened out, which is going to impact her a little bit. But as far as throwing a lot of water on her property or taking a lot of property, we're not going to do that. We're looking at making some changes there to, like I said, lessen the impact. There is an overhead telephone line that crosses over the road near the bridge on this side of the bridge, we're going to have to look at getting with the farmer's telephone about either raising that line up or moving the poles where they're, it actually crosses over and then back. We can get them to move it all on one side and not cross the road, but we're actually going to be raising the grade on this side of the bridge about three feet. That's going to have a high issue right there with that overhead line.
I think we've got it inside.
Have you talked to them?
No, we just discovered that Friday, so I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, I think that can be resolved pretty quick. We can get that done.
I may need to get with you and find out who's the best person to talk to.
You just need to go through the engineering department, but I'll talk to them, you know, just to...
Who's the contact in engineering department now?
Probably Shane Trotman.
Okay. I wasn't sure who to talk to. But what I'm going to try to get to y'all this week is a schedule from here to letting time, know where we're going to be at certain dates, and by me giving that to you is going to make us accountable, hit those deadlines, and make sure we stay on track here on end.
That sounds good.
Is there any way, Chuck, we can get the right of a stick out, what the property owners know, how far we're talking about in their property, and also if we could have elevation or mistakes and tell them, hey, we're just going to raise it a foot or two foot or whatever? Now we can understand better.
Yes, we should be able to do that within a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Once we get some of these issues resolved, we know we can determine exactly where the right way is going to be for each of these properties, yes, we can do that.
Do you think you can give us a plan by next council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Which is...
We have two weeks from today.
February, what is it, six?
Oh, February 6th. So you're not meeting in two weeks?
We work, it's the first and third Monday.
Yes, I should have something about that.
That's good.
I'd be glad to come back for the council meeting on that date if you want me to do another update.
Well, it would be good to kind of keep us updated on this as we go along.
Sure.
So if you could come, either, you know, about every council meeting and let us know, because we want to get this project going, or at least every other meeting, and kind of keep us, you know, up to date on what's going on.
I'll be glad to do that. Probably every other meeting.
If we know we can help, then we would be willing to do that.
I'll be glad to do that.
If we don't know, we can say...
Right, absolutely.
What do you anticipate for the level to let the bid?
I will know more in about two weeks. When I come to the next February 6th meeting, I'll be able to let you know that date.
Okay.
I just don't have enough information right now to do that.
You are behind?
Yes, sir.
And we want to push that along.
I agree. I've been pushing for several weeks now with my crew, and like I said, I've got a team in place now that I can get the things done.
And Nikki, she's our lawyer, so all the right away sessions go to her.
Right. Soon as we get the deed and the track sketches together, we'll get them to you, correspond and look at our ready.
What do you anticipate with my budget?
Mr. Byron, I just don't have enough information right now to even take it. Like I said, two weeks I'll be able to give you a firm date. I need to commit something tonight, it'd be wrong, I'm going to change it in two weeks. Give me two more weeks and I'll have the dates.
We'll be late.
Oh, three weeks, we're at February 6th.
February 6th, sir. We'll be good. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
He pretty much answered mine. People, you know, people in the community are asking when we're going to get this going, and you know, we're waiting on you guys.
I understand, and I apologize for being behind schedule, but we're going to move forward.
We appreciate it.
All right, we'll keep you on.
What's your timeline of the bridge being completed once it's started?
I don't know what the, how many days construct would it even got set up for them to get?
There's no money, about 180 working days?
No, it won't be much different than that, 150 to 180.
Yeah, that's no money, that's 14. That's not counting.
I just want to clarify that.
Hopefully by next year, this time, we'll be driving on the...
Absolutely.
All right, that's all we want.
That's all we want, okay. We're going to shoot for that then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sammy?
We will be starting baseball, softball, tee ball signups Saturday from 10 to 2 at the Field of Dreams, and we'll have them Saturday the 28th, the next weekend, at Field of Dreams from 10 to 2.
So baseball, softball, sign up, tee ball, everything's ready to go?
Yep.
Ready to get signed up, ready to go?
Ready to go, all right.
Sounds good? Sounds real good. Now, I think you said a while back that you had a pretty full slate this summer of tournaments? Tell us a little bit about that.
Well, we've got about everything organized in the areas, just having turnputs up there at different times, different Saturdays, and I had people contacting me today wanting to have more tournaments, so we have, I think we have 26 or 27 scheduled. Our first one's going to be February the 4th, it's kind of a umpire training deal with high school girls, which is what, two weeks away? We're going to play volleyball there. And then, starting about 1st of March, end of February, we book every weekend through the end of July, and then I've got people asking for some September dates and August dates now. It brings a lot of revenue, and we've had as many as 26 high school teams there at one time, you know, 20 youth softball teams there at one time, there's a lot of people in Towne or Angel on days if we got that. You can't hardly get into one of the fast food places. You're doing great things, we appreciate it, Sammy. Thank you.
Sounds good.
That's awesome.
Sir?
I'm going to keep that all working, it's already working.
Tim?
Well, for the chamber, our 50th annual meeting, Thursday night, so everybody that's come, remember to be there that night. It's Thursday night, bring your umbrella if you have to, it's like a wet day, Thursday.
Sounds like it might be a little wet.
Be warm after.
Who's the entertainer this time?
Comedian David Farrell.
I think I've heard of him before.
What was the ticket sales on that again? Just cases, pick with him?
Well, right now, pretty close to being sold out, but you know, if here somebody wanted to go, you know, just tell them to get in touch with me, we'll probably handle a few more.
Food's always good?
Food's good. We have good wine, and of course, person here, presentation, so forth.
Okay. All right, we'll... The only thing that I had down was, for me tonight, is a resolution to get rid of some property that's not any good anymore for the library, it's six chairs, Marshall's going to bring that up later on. The other thing that I had was Guffy Dustless Sand Blasting is going to do some sand blasting down there at the, at the library to, to the book drop, and so we can get it painted, it's in real bad shape and rusty and got some real bad edges, and had a couple of people already kind of nicked their arms, and so we want to fix that up and get it in better shape. So that'll be the two things that I had. And I'll start off with the, on the far end of that, Mr. Ross.
All right, Mayor. Tonight I'll be appointing Willie Wright as the acting, or I'm sorry, as the fire chief on a nine-to-day probation. Also, I'll be bringing up Willie Wright to be the safety coordinator, that's where, if he might have any wrecks or anything like that, he can take care of it inside the city, to you boys.
No, that's, I'm the safety coordinator, that's, I think that's supposed to be that they have safety meetings with all the department heads, monthly or quarterly.
We talked about that, I think.
Kind of head up, head up any kind of problems with wrecks, like you said, make sure everybody, if they have a wreck, they have to go to the doctor. Yeah, it's good to have, and actually, that safety coordinator helps us with our insurance, so that's a great thing to have.
Right. I think you'll be a good fit for it, Mayor.
Okay.
Also, empower you to do the yearly rental agreement, the Canon copier for Mary and Doug, I'll be bringing that up as well.
Okay.
And really, that's all I've got for that.
Mr. Byron?
Mayor, have the glory of the Reagan. We've been talking and discussing about our time clocks, and I think this is going to be a real neat thing. You know, when we met with them the other day, it's going to be, the only one we really had to be concerned with is the shop and the pool, but the antenna will work that, tie that together, and it's going to be real neat. The thumbprint, time clock, when you put your thumbprint down, it goes straight to Kelly. And it will keep the time and everything for all the employees, and just to keep down a lot of other things that go on, so I'll bring that up tonight, for, empower the mayor to sign that contract to do that, and then that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Does that include the department's head?
Yes.
Does that have to time any time? What does it call?
14986.
It's been dated not for long time, so I'm glad to be in.
It will, Bijon, you know, there's some things that we've got to work out, there's some little issues and stuff, but I mean, all of it's going to work real good, because it's going to just, like I said, it goes straight to her when they put their thumbprint down, it ain't no squibbling, this eliminates all that, it goes straight to her, and it keeps the time.
It eliminates the errors, I mean, it shoots straight to it.
Watson Buttermain, you got a time clock, why don't the tunnel clock?
We don't have time clocks in every department in the city, and so this is, this is going to help, help with that, to get new time clocks all of them, so.
This is going to cover the whole city.
And this is all, yeah, this will cover the whole city. The summer workers, when they clock in, it automatically goes to a file, and then it's ready for Betty or Kelly to pull that file and make up the checks on Wednesday, so everything will be automatic, there's no carrying time clocks by, or cards back and forth or anything like that, it's all done automatically. A lot of cities and a lot of different businesses are going to this right here, where it's all taken care of, you know, automatically.
I missed the part you say you're going to have time clock, what are you going to have it?
You'll have time clocks in...
Every building.
Every building.
Even Sam, Sammy Alden?
Okay, you don't have to drive all the way.
Is this something like, it's a one-time phase, they put it in, like, is it my time?
Yeah, they got, this is might not, it's built into something.
It's might not, it's not something.
It didn't have might nots and everything on it.
I'm just getting updated.
Albert Vale and Decatur and a lot of the cities already has this, Marshall, there's a lot of cities going to that now. It just eliminates a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what it is, I was...
That's all I have right now, Mark. That keeps everybody honest too. I just leave it like that.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, Bijon, you ready?
Yes, sir. My cup is full tonight, I hope you all have time.
We'll go fast. We'll run out of time.
Okay, the first three things I want to do tonight is, that's something we need to do it, every administration is appointing the judge, the prosecutor, and the public defender, that's something we haven't done yet for this administration, so I'm going to bring this up tonight. Our judge, we're going to keep him as Glenn Shit, it seems like he's doing a good job, so I'm going to bring that up, appoint him as a judge for the city, and I'm going to call Chris Croft to be our prosecutor, he's been doing that for five, six years now, and it seems like he's doing a good job. And Andrew Heirston, he's already the judge for Fort Bend, but he comes in here to our defender, so I'm going to appoint him to be a public defender. And then, the main thing we're going to be talking about tonight is for our chief of police and assistant chief of police, who went through the envy process, and I reckon every council member agree with what I'm going to bring up tonight, is I'm appointing Kevin Smith to be our chief of police. I'm going to read what Kevin has done on his career. Kevin has been in law enforcement four times since 1995, he's certified as a law enforcement officer in two states, which is state of Alabama, state of Tennessee, I think he worked in Tennessee for 50 years. He's gone through excessive training in the University of Law Enforcement and has received upward of 50 certification and completion achievement and commendation. He strives to create a safe environment for citizens and community, and to build relationships with the surrounding agencies. And Kevin, he is resident in DeKalb County, which is a mile from Savannah, man, down he lives, and with his wife, Brandy, and their son, Nathan, and he is, the kids are involved with the Boys County of America Leadership Coaching in Youth Sport and Servant and Children Ministry and Church Bus Ministry. They are currently members of the Mercy Temple Church of God in Peace God. I'm glad to introduce Mr. Kevin Smith, if he wants to come up to the podium and let everybody see him, say whatever we want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Period. I'm honored that you've chosen me for that position. I hope to honorably serve the city, the council, the citizens of this town. I have an open door policy that I will implement for every employee, for every citizen, and I want to do some great things for this city to make it grow and bring honor back to this department, where everybody's proud of this department, even more proud than they already are. I think that with y'all's help and y'all's guidance, we can do that together, and I thank you again for the opportunity, honor being chief here.
As I told you before, Kevin, the chief of police job is very, very important.
Yes, sir.
It's almost as important as being a mayor.
Yes, sir.
And people are going to look up to you, and I think you're going to do us a good job, and I don't think we went wrong by choosing you, so.
Thank you again.
And hopefully we have enough votes tonight to pass that, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'll ask all my questions. Thank you all again.
And next, I'm going to introduce Josh Wiggly as assistant chief. Josh grew up here in Ransville, he's the son of Barry and Madonna Wiggly, he's a husband to Amanda Wiggly, and they have two kids, one is Jackson, the other one is Savannah, that I said, okay. He attended Platteville High School and graduated from there, he is an active member of the Broadway Baptist Church. He worked at the Ransville City Shop when he started in 2004 and 2005, then took a job as a correction officer at the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office in 2005, and he worked at 2008. He went to Jefferson County Sheriff Academy and graduated as a road deputy. He applied for a police officer position in the city of Ransville in 2009, and after taking the position at Ransville Police Department, he brought back the hometown where he would raise and grow his family. And I'm honored to introduce Josh Wiggly as our assistant chief, if he wants to come to the podium and introduce him.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this great opportunity to serve my town and the citizens there, and I look forward to this opportunity to work with Chief Smith. We've been working together for a couple months now with Chef, and I've grown to really like him and respect him. I'm a lot like him, have an open door policy for the men in my department, the women in my department, to y'all as council mayor, doors always look open for y'all, and to the town. Anytime they need to talk, whatever the problem is, I want to be able to hear it as if we can resolve it in a quick manner. Again, I just want to thank y'all for this opportunity.
And what we worked out with Josh is, he wants to work where, not 24 hours, but what, about say 7:00 in the morning to 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, they're going to have an open door policy, anybody, any citizen wants to go in and talk to the leader of the department, they'll be able to. So he's going to work, I think, in nights shifts on, and weekends for sure, because we want somebody to be there to answer questions.
Correct.
And it worked out for Josh to do that for us, and we're glad to have him.
Thank you.
Very good.
Did you get a code for me for that...
No, we have not had an opportunity to do that today.
What it is, is we have a problem, the citizen and some of these other officers from other towns comes to our shooting range, and because of the liability, we don't want that to be open. We want it closed, we're going to put the sign up, say, you know, for Ransville officers only, and that's up to the chief of police, the assistant chief, if they want somebody from, say, Sheriff's Department, whatever, come in, they have to get the permission from them to go in. So we want to do a gate up and close that shooting range. He don't know how much it's going to cost, but if I get that, it shouldn't be more than $400 or $500.
Shouldn't be, I will have that note personally in the morning.
Yeah, I will think it's going to be that.
Right, so I'm going to bring that up, and I have to pass that where they can put the gate up.
That'll be fine.
Yeah, I think that's all I've got for right now.
Marshall?
I just got these resolutions too, the mayor gave me one, it's supposed to be some chairs, some back chairs at the library, and the other one is a field drag from the Field of Dreams.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right. That's it for right now, we'll take a break for 5:00. Bijon?
Here.
Ricky?
Here.
Derek?
Present.
Okay. Have a motion, will you?
I'll make a motion to eliminate the reading of the, what is it? The minutes from last council meeting.
Second.
Until, and I'll prove it, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, and Ricky seconded to adopt the minutes of the last council meeting without the reading of it, so I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, I forgot about two things when we were going through the process a little bit ago. Back some time ago, we hired Ricky Campbell as, to mow up and down the side of roads at, at $10, and since then, we have got this, we've got this sanitation contract with Savannah, and Ricky was a CDL driver, and so he moved up into a CDL spot, and we hadn't changed his rate of pay or changed his classification or anything, so I'm going to put it out there for a motion that we change Ricky Campbell to a CDL driver, part-time, 19 hours, the pay is $12.50.
I'll say that.
No, I didn't.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion, and then I'll say.
We have a motion and a second to, to change the classification for Ricky Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The second thing that didn't, I didn't put down, was we've got a contract with a company, it's an insurance agency that has worked, done some work for the city, and we're not going to re-up that contract, it's with Aaronoff, and so I'm putting that out there for somebody to make a motion on that, that we do not renew the contract.
I'll make a motion to eliminate Aaronoff contract at this time.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Marshall is going to do this for me, so I'm going to do this, this, the library needs some sand blasting done on the book drop, and that's with Guffy Dustless Blasting, Sand Blasting, and that cost is at $300 to redo the book drop and get it in good shape, and so I put that out for a motion.
I move that we do that, Mayor, for the Guffy, if you'd be able to do that.
Okay.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second to, for Mr. Pius, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right, we'll start off with Marshall.
I've got a, oh, let's see, I want to pass, or put up for a motion, Resolution 11617A, it's getting rid of some broken chairs in the library.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1162017, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it.
Resolution 1, I mean, yeah, 11617B, it's getting rid of a field drag at the Field of Dreams.
Okay.
I've got it for them.
Have a motion to adopt Resolution 1162017B, I'll have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Marshall, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, all right, we'll go right down the line then with Mr. Taheri.
Mayor, I've got several appointments to do tonight. Number one is appointing our police chief. I'm going to recommend Mr. Kevin Smith to be our police chief, effective the next week. Mayor, I've got several appointments to do tonight, number one is appointing the, our police chief, I'm gonna recommend Mr. Kevin Smith to be our police chief, effective, uh, the next May period, wherever the pay starts. I have a motion on it.
This is to appoint him as, uh, as the Resville Police Chief with a ninety-day probationary period, is that right?
Right.
All right, we have a second.
My second is motion, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay.
And this is nothing personal against Kevin, I think he did a great job.
Okay. All right, next?
Next, I have, uh, appointment, appointee for our assistant police chief, Mr. Josh, uh, Wigley, he's gonna be our assistant police chief, effective immediately with the next May period, and I'll have that on the table to be voted.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, next, uh, I'm gonna appoint, uh, Glenn Shet to be our city judge, and, uh, he's been doing this for several years now, so I'll put that on table tonight to appoint him back on the city judge.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second for Glenn Shet to be our judge, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Also, we're gonna, uh, appoint Chris Croft to be our, uh, city prosecutor, he's been doing this for several years now, and we happy with what we have, so, uh, I'm gonna put that on table for motion tonight.
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion for Chris Croft for prosecutor, all in, uh, motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And also, uh, our, uh, public defender is gonna be Andrew Hairston, he's been does this job also for several years, we happy with what he's doing, I'll put that on paper, motion tonight to, uh, get the second on that.
I'll say it, it's motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to hire, uh, public defender Andrew Hairston, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
And also, uh, I want to put this on the, motion tonight to, uh, purchase the gate for the, our shooting range, for, uh, safety, and also for, uh, protection of the city property. To put the gate up, the cost should not be more than five hundred dollars, I'll put that on the motion tonight to pass that and get that on.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to put a gate at the shooting range, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carry it.
And that's all I got.
That was a long list.
That was a long list, but, uh, it had to be done.
All right. Byron?
Mayor, uh, we, uh, I need to make a motion to empower you to sign the contract on our time clocks with Gordon and Reagan, with fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Giving you authorization to sign that contract with them.
Okay.
And that money comes from where?
It comes from the state Capitol, Capitol Prudential Fund, that's where this comes from. Um, time clocks is something that we have been talking about for a pretty good while, and, uh, it, we, we went through a big process to try to tie the time clocks to our computer system, so everything kinda flows together. And so we've come up with this, this plan here, and it looks like everything's gonna work good on this, um, so that's the reason we're putting this out here. We didn't have time clocks in some locations, and so this is another reason that we wanted to upgrade our time clocks, so this is the direction that we wanna go. This'll be thumbprint time clocks, and you just thumbprint in and thumbprint out, and so, that's what this is for. So, all right, we have a motion for this, did we have a second?
Second, sir.
All right, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. I'll say it.
Other thing I have, Mayor, we've been, uh, men, councilman, Taheri and councilman Ross, and he's been working on, uh, the, of our boards, our city boards and stuff, and I have some, four different ones that I'd like to add to our industrial development board. First one would be Benji Lany, I'd put that in the form of motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next one would be, uh, Kevin Wilks, Kevin is a, he works for Hudson Foods, I think he'd been an asset to that board, uh, he lives down here by the, uh, Co-op, so I put that in the form of motion, we had him as well.
Second.
Well, we have a motion and s, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The other one, uh, the next one I'd like to add is Robert Ellis, uh, Robert's been here for a long time, his father-in-law's involved in that as well, so I'd like to make a motion and put him on there as well.
I'll second you.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Robert Ellis on the industrial development board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The last one I have, I'd like to put, uh, Donnie Junior Frazier on there as well, uh, I'll put that in front of motion.
I'll say it on that, too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to put Donnie Frazier on the industrial development board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it.
Tell Ohio, Mayor.
Spend enough money, gotta move on.
Let's go ahead and proceed on this one.
All right, all right, Mr. Ross?
Uh, Mayor. First thing I have, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Willie Wright as our fire chief, uh, with a ninety-day probation effective immediately, I'll put that in motion.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, to appoint Willie Wright as the new fire chief with a ninety-day probation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
All right, next thing I have is, uh, appoint Willie Wright as our new safety coordinator, I'll put that in motion.
I'll say it, Mayor.
I have a motion and a second, and with this, safety coordinator, uh, I'm, I'm gonna stress that this is really, really important, it's really important to the city, it's really important to our insurance, and to keep our people safe, you know, our police officers, our firemen, our people that work in the shop, everybody that works for the city. Safety coordinator helps out with that, with that safety side of it, so this is a big responsibility that we're putting on your shoulders, so. Do a good job.
Thank you, I do, appreciate it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll say it.
Mayor, the next thing I have is, um, to empower, uh, I'll make a motion to empower the mayor, uh, to sign the, uh, yearly rental agreement with Barry Dunn. I'll, I'll make that as a motion.
Is that, or like a copy or some?
Copy, yeah, it's Barry Dunn rental agreement, um, covers parts, labors, and tollers.
Okay.
I'll say it on there.
All right, we have a motion and a second to empower me, uh, to sign contract with, uh, Barry Dunn on, uh, Canon copier, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll say it.
And Mayor, it's all Ohio.
Okay.
That's the contract, if you want to sign it.
Uh, anything else?
I'll make a motion, we paid the bills, Mayor.
We have a motion to pay the monthly bills?
I'll say it.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I'll make a motion to adjourn if there's no other business.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second is motion.
We got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You opposed, you can stay here the rest of the night.